October 2nd, 2024, come to order budget meetings.
Budget meetings.
United States of America. And we see the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Residents are assigned in to speak during citizens' requests. Speakers are allotted three minutes to present their initial comments. All meetings are recorded audibly and visually. And roll call, please, Ms. Wurz.
Ms. Wurz.
Here.
Mrs. Depew.
Here.
Mrs. Iker.
Here.
Mr. Luchetti.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Sobrowski.
Here.
Mr. Vee.
Here.
Mayor Noak will not be joining us this evening. Uh, and as your old Mr. Furman, in his place, we have Mr. Robert P. Ternan from Tucker. Mr. Russmizel.
Here.
There is a warm present.
Thank you. Okay, now time for our citizens' request. And first, we have Jared Hoffman. Please stand and state your name and address.
My name is Jared Hoffman, 5328 Spring Valley Drive.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, mo-most of you are probably aware why I'm here, hopefully. Um, there, we are asking, um, and you have these twenty-five signatures now for a traffic harm study on Spring Valley Drive. Um, I first want to thank the police department who came out and put the speed signs up this week. We are very appreciative of that. Um, but we are asking the borough for a more permanent solution. I've lived on the street for two years, um, and in that time, it is a cut through. We see people coming very fast up and down the street. We have several families that live on the street. And I think it's important that we look at what we can do, whether it's lowering the speed limit, putting speed bumps in, um, keeping the, the s-speed signs up, which would be incredibly helpful. Um, I, it, there's a matter of safety here. Um, I love the neighborhood. I walk the neighborhood twice a day. I've already walked twice today. I'll probably do another time tonight. Um, and when we're, when I'm out there and I have to go into someone's yard because someone's coming up so quickly on me, it's an uncomfortable feeling. Uh, just today, we have neighbors who are out on, their kids are out riding scooters on the street, um, which is a little bit of a scary feeling when you see the kids out there. And people don't slow down. They're flying past them. Um, I don't know how fast they're going. I can't say how fast that they're, they're going. I'm not, I'm not a police officer. Um, but it's, I, I do know that they're going fast. We have, you know, commercial vehicles, uh, school buses, um, you know, coming down the street as well. Especially in the afternoon, um, when we have parking on the one side of the street, uh, mainly in the afternoon. It makes the street quite tight as well. So when we have people who are going entirely too fast, um, not only is it dangerous for pedestrians, it's dangerous for people who are coming up and down the street as well. Um, so I am asking the borough to, uh, consider doing this study. Uh, I do think that there are some common sense solutions that we can, uh, do that are not, hopefully, super expensive for the borough. And I do thank you all for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Jared. You know, I want to follow up right now with that because you have twenty-five signatures. And I believe that's the first step in the process.
Yes.
And if I could endeavor to Chief Begore to explain the next steps for these folks?
Well, right now, there's no official action that needs to be taken by the borough for the program. The twenty-five signatures is enough to initiate it. All you have to do is turn your petition into me.
Okay.
And then I will contact you later this week, early next week, and we'll discuss the issues that you're experiencing. And then the police department will start taking it and definitely get it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Okay, next we have Lori Bickel. Name and address, please.
Lori Bickel, nineteen West Pub Drive, two one five two three six. Uh, first of all, then I'd like to thank you for coming down our street. Like you just spoke to me about and seeing how bad it is to make a left and turn around. So I appreciate that. Um, Scott, I spoke with my husband. He wanted me to talk about the swell in the water. It's my eighth meeting of boats in twenty-four years about a water problem. So just keep that on wraps. Um, you talked about, um, possibly putting that pipe in and, you know, you're still looking into all that. He just wanted to know, will you talk to the residents? If that involves, because the trees in our yard, the, uh, the roots are kind of, you know, probably to that area. And we really don't want to get our trees, like, cut off with, at the roots and then they start to die off. Then he's gonna have to take those down. So if you could let us know if this all comes into fruition, like, the size of the pipe, how far down, you'll have to dig, things like that. Those are just a few questions he wanted me to ask you and think about.
Well, we're really, um, at the early stages of the project, a potential project. You know, it's, it'll be, um, brought up to council at their budget meetings for their consideration. I don't know how they will, um, move forward or if they will. But i-if which time, or at, at some time in the future, if they do, then certainly there will be, I'm guessing, probably numerous meetings with the residents. One for the easements, one's just for the question and answering, um, description of the scope of work so everyone understands it. And at that time, we can certainly discuss what would be required as far as the, the number of trees or the tree removal limits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That was for everybody too, since I talked to you about the trees and the piping and everything. And a third thing real quick, I'm still asking, and there's other people in the audience. Can you please get this room turned around?
Well, Lori, I know that.
And I know because of the budget it said, but like, just the temporary, even if we could do that. I mean, each one of us can pick up a chair and move it. So, and I'm not trying to be funny with this. As a designer, the layout of this room with people's access and we can't hear is not a good concept at all.
I understand what you're saying. And also, as a designer, you know, it's set up this way because of the, um, technology that we had set up to run the wiring and everything for our, you know, technology to film and stuff.
It literally has to be moved. The camera can still see everybody. There's outlets everywhere. I'm just, I'm just.
I know. And I know back there, they have the, uh, that sound back there.
The mechanical is right outside.
The cannibal, so it's like that. I, I get you. You know, we'll see.
Yeah, it's just taking you people and they really against that wall there so the chairs for all the audience can be here. And, um, aesthetically, this isn't the right way. It shouldn't have been laid out. You have rectangle, use the major long wall, the rectangle for the people in line to council. Yeah, so.
So, can I add something?
Oh, please, go ahead.
President? So, there are, so yes, there's the budget, right? That we've already contacted the AV group to budget out and they have the plan for what this layout is. We obviously have the consideration that the room has already been decorated. There is also the consideration that we have to be careful with the fire exits and the noise that's coming in and how potential configurations can, can block that. Just going to skip looking at me like, yep, don't block fire exit.
Aesthetically, if emergency exit's there and you have to go back, pass two chairs and get there. Same thing here. If you did, it'd still be two chairs, one that way to get in and out.
We also.
I put that in consideration.
And I appreciate that. We also have some other people that meet in this room. Um, and there are some other committee meetings that happen and people that need, um, wide enough spaces to move around that the, the configuration here has been taken into consideration to meet the needs.
All right, secondly, then, can we raise you up? And can we get some microphones? See, I knew you could sing that song. Thank you.
Ms. Bickel just a comment. Microphones are part of the streaming quote that had been approved previously. I, I don't know if that came across in my report, but there have been discussions that would be part of not only the live streaming and the cameras, but microphones, amplifiers, speakers for in-room and the streaming. So that is part of that project.
Okay, yeah, because some people said they couldn't even roll good on the live streaming, so. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Bev Jones. Please stand and state your name and address.
Bev Jones, one fifty-two Providence Way. I'm just here because, um, to follow up from last, two weeks ago about the trail in the water runoff off of Hamilton Road over the, um, the Hamilton Road hillside. I saw that there were engineers there, which I was really happy to see. And they were even walking through where the lands, the land has slid. And they didn't just look at the trail. So I'm just really here to, because I want to be kept aware and know what's going on.
Um, I can address.
Yeah, please.
Um, so, um, Joe Galbreth from my office, as well as Joe Fagan, geotechnical engineer, visited the site on the twenty-fourth, um, for one, to look at the trail, but also to look at the, um, the, um, landslides, the slips that are being shown. Um, so, uh, that has occurred. Um, they're coordinating a meeting with developer to have them addressed.
Okay.
As far as the sidewalk or the trail goes, um, Scott Pellet, the planner, is aware of that. And he is reviewing that request with, um, Herb Furman's office for the possibility of the removal of that trail to the tower. It's not really practical now. So, um, they're reviewing what would be required as far as the approvals for that. The, the original approvals occurred four or five years ago. So, I don't have a definitive answer on the trajectory as of yet. But the developer has been made aware of the, uh, of the landslides that are there.
Okay.
And, um, waiting for their, um, proposal to correct it.
I did notice, um, how they have the, the sandbags up along Hamilton to prevent the water from running over. So the last time it rained, I was driving down Hamilton. You can see, I mean, those sandbags, sandbags are obviously helping, but you can see how the water's hitting that and running over the road. So would that be something that they'll consider if they do remove the trail to make sure whatever they do up there, to make sure that the water, because the water, when it runs over the hillside, does not go into the storm drains at all?
Um, I would say that it's one of many problems that you have there. Um, the landscaping that occurred in the rear yards, it, it may need to be addressed to direct water to the, to the storm inlets. Certainly, if the trail is removed, we would have to review how that area would be finished and how it would be landscaped. It would be with mounds to prevent that water from running off. There's a few things to consider.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now with Roxanne Gray Walsh, name and address?
Sure. Hi, I'm Roxanne Gray Walsh, one sixty Providence Way. And I believe our questions have been answered.
I was always back.
So, thank you.
Keep pursuing that view. Thank you. Oh, we have the bills of pay, will Ms. Wurz?
Thank you, Ms. Wurz. Administrative Services, Mrs. Depew.
In order.
Planning and zoning, Mr. Vee.
In order.
Public Safety, Mr. Vee.
In order.
Public Works, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Recreation, Mr. Sobrowski.
In order.
Storm Sewer Fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Sanitary Sewer Fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, Mrs. Depew.
In order.
And Capital Projects Fund, Mrs. Depew.
In order.
I would ask for a motion to approve bills on the bill listed October the second, two thousand and twenty-four, from the General Fund totaling one million, two hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred twenty dollars and ninety-two cents. From the Storm Sewer Fund totaling twenty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars and four cents. From the Sanitary Sewer Fund totaling nine hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. And from the, from the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund totaling fifty-two thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. And from the Capital Projects Fund totaling nine thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and no cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I would also ask for a motion to approve checks and transfers you ratified from the General Fund totaling twenty thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Uh, and from the Paywell Fund totaling fifty-five thousand, one hundred three dollars and fifty-three cents for a grand total ratification in the amount of seventy-five thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents.
So moved. Second?
Motion's been second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm mentioning that we are paying accordance with the Public Works Union contract.
And we next ask for a motion to approve payroll for the pay date of September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And there is a overtime list attached to that.
Okay. Thank you. And we have approval of the minutes for September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four council meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Mayor Noak is not with us this evening. However, we'll have Mr. Vee to report, please, which will be very brief.
He says it's gonna be brief. I gotta call stories on it.
Yeah, the mayor is, uh, out of time, we should, we can say. So, uh, I am the mayor for the next two weeks. So call me if you have any issues. We can handle those for you. But I can tell you one thing, this report will save you time. Tonight, you have at least fifteen minutes longer with your family. First of all, the August report, uh, monthly report EMS assist. We're at one forty-nine up to, uh, for two twenty, twenty twenty-four up to this point. Uh, court hearings, fifty-six in norm. Accidents, pretty comparable to last year, eleven. Criminal arrests, twenty. Last year was twenty-one. Of those, uh, four were DUIs. Traffic stops, a hundred and eight. Last year was a hundred and nine. Traffic details, a hundred and twenty-eight. Traffic violations citations, ninety-two. Traffic violations warning, eighty-six. So there, nothing is out of line there. Uh, money's collected and turned over to the borough during the month of September in twenty twenty-four totaling three thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents. Uh, the break down from the magistrate, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eight cents, uh, from the best money crime code in local quarters, uh, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Parking fines, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Coffee, some police reports, a hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, mechanical licenses, six hundred. And fines from the clerk of courts, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents, uh, submitted by Jessica Morgan. And, uh, two things on the list. Uh, Officer Robbie Smith, you know, anybody know Robbie Smith? He, he is perfect for the DARE program. I mean, I, I've known him for a long time. And, uh, Chief was telling me earlier when we had a meeting that, uh, one of the hardest duties in high school, at least when I was there, was having cafeteria duty. If you saw cafeteria duty on your schedule, it's like, oh, no. All right. Rob, Robbie can go in and the kids love him so much, they cheer when he walks in. If you're a supervisor in that cafeteria, that's not good. That's not good. But he's that well-respected. And, uh, we've, we've been blessed with the, uh, people we've had in the DARE program. A lot of you probably remember Officer Bruce. And before, and right after Officer Bruce was Dave Arpin and Robbie Smith. They're just perfect. Chief's done a great job picking the right people out. So, anyway, Officer Smith started the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Whitehall Police, uh, DARE program on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. He will be focusing on the fifth and seventh grade classes in Baldwin, Whitehall Schools, and the Mother of Mercy Academy. The police department is looking into repair or replacing options for the pedestrian signals at Brownsfield slash Baptist, Provo's Road intersection. Depending on the cost, this may need to be a capital budget and a budget item for twenty twenty-five. So, uh, that's all I got.
All right.
I think I'll stories.
Thank you, Mr. Vee. Any questions for Mr. Vee?
No, for the mayor. Any questions for the mayor?
Very good, thank you. And next we have our solicitor's report. Mr. P. Ternan.
Madam President, I have nothing to report tonight. I will note that the manager does have an ordinance which has been prepared for consideration and potential action.
Okay, thank you. Engineer, Mr. Russmizel.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this is all from our report dated September twenty-seventh. On page one, item one of Phase Two Stormwater MS Four Permit, just to make council aware that, um, the annual report was submitted, um, at its deadline on September thirtieth. Under item two, the twenty twenty-three sanitary sewer excavation repair contract, Rotorouder has, um, submitted a pay application number four. Um, it is in order for approval. We review and recommend its approval. Uh, so the recommended, uh, motion is to approve pay application number four in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and no cents for the twenty twenty-three Whitehall Borough Sanitary Sewer Excavation Repair Contract to Rotorouder Service Company.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
On page two, item four, Overlook Park. Um, just to make council aware that the final section of railing has been installed. Um, part of the pavement repairs have been completed. At four o'clock this afternoon, they made us aware that, um, Baldwin Asphalt will be on site tomorrow uh, to, uh, repair the, um, remaining section of that asphalt, um, parking area. And then they will be sealing it. So it'll be ready to be open if all goes well at the end of the week.
Oh, wonderful.
I heard that. Can we, can we just say that again? We all know that this has been my thing.
Well, believe it or not, that was a conversation.
We'll be done.
Believe it or not, that was a conversation this morning. Why don't we follow up and make sure that I assume that.
You know that ladies are gonna ask. Thank you. Just in time for the weekend for the kids to go play.
Exactly. Let's hope.
Yes.
But, well, in regard, we see that the pavement is in better repair. Uh, the steps are now safe. There's a railing. So, yes, I say that we open it up.
So, if we get the sign off, can we have things posted?
Oh, absolutely. Very okay.
Thank you. I want to make sure all of our friends, especially over on Spring Valley close by, have a chance to get there.
And then just two final things, um, overlook Phase Two. Um, just to make council aware that next week is the bid opening as well as the Merces Solar Panel Project. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Russmizel?
Uh, yes, I, I just want to, um, clarify for the record that the Phase Two would be, um, there, I see there's a bid opening on October ninth for, for in part the stairs from, um, the, the descent over, uh, the overlooked park into Spring Valley, in, into, um, an alleyway that had been, um, constructed, no, rather, a walkway that had been constructed to, to the street there. And it's my concern as a mother that we have, um, good traffic controls around that pathway as, um, things progress with the reopening of overlook park as well as, um, the contemplation of going ahead and moving forward with, um, redoing those stairs. Yes?
Um, yeah, so noted. Once we, um, receive bids, um, and we start through the bid process or the contract process, uh, there'll be a reconstruction meeting and we can, uh, we'll certainly be highlighting the need for the traffic control. It's, it's covered in the contract.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, we can address it at that time.
Yeah, um, I, I will also note that there are, is really very sparse signage on the Spring Valley side to indicate that a municipal park is even there. And it, it would be nice to have some signage to, to let people know that the, the stairs are there. Thank you. Okay.
So, one of the questions, we have, um, Row Manager, Ms. Wurz.
Thank you, Ms. Wurz. Uh, quick report this evening. Uh, there's only one item on my report and then just a couple of updates. Uh, but first, the borough solicitor has drafted the ordinance amending the compensation for the position of tax collector. It's discussed at the last meeting. And I ask for a motion to read that, uh, ordinance in its entirety before adoption.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance of the Borough of Whitehall, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the compensation of the elected borough tax collector to be paid by the Borough of Whitehall. Whereas Article Four of the Borough of Whitehall Home Rule Charter created the elected position of tax collector. And whereas the next scheduled election for the position of tax collector in the Borough of Whitehall shall take place on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five. And whereas pursuant to Section C six oh one of the Charter, the term of service of the tax collector shall commence on the first Monday in January, January, following such election. And whereas January fifth, two thousand twenty-six is the first Monday in January following the election of the tax collector. And whereas Section C six oh four of the Charter concerns the compensation of the tax collector. And whereas pursuant to Section C six oh four of the Charter, the Council of the Borough of Whitehall has the authority to fix the salary of the tax collector. And whereas the current salary of the tax collector is fifteen thousand dollars per year. And whereas the Council of the Borough of Whitehall desires to adjust the salary of tax collector to twenty-five thousand per year, now therefore be ordained and enacted by the Borough of, excuse me, by the Council of the Borough of Whitehall, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as follows. Section one, effective January fifth, twenty, two thousand twenty-six, the salary of the elected tax collector of the Borough of Whitehall shall be twenty-five thousand dollars per year. Section two, repealer. Any ordinance or part of an ordinance conflicting with provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed insofar as they may conflict with the provisions of this ordinance. Section three, severability. If any of the provisions of this ordinance shall be held invalid for any reason whatsoever, then unless such provision or term is material to this ordinance as to render this ordinance impracticable, impracticable to perform, such provision or term shall be deemed severable from the remaining provisions or terms of this ordinance and shall in no way affect the validity or enforceability of any other provisions hereof. Section four, effective date. This ordinance shall become effective upon adoption but shall have no impact on the tax, tax collector's compensation until January fifth, two thousand and twenty-six. Ordained and enacted into law by the Borough Council of the Borough of Whitehall this day. So I would ask for a motion to approve ordinance eleven seventy-six.
So moved.
Wouldn't it be a roll call?
It would be a roll call, yes. I'm sorry, so was there a motion in the second?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Wurz?
Yes.
Mrs. Depew?
Yes.
Mrs. Iker?
Yes.
Mr. Luchetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Sobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Vee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, and then I just wanted to update council that I did spend the day, uh, with Mr. Harris and Mr. Porter at our annual MS Four training that's required as part of our MS Four permit. Um, so many thanks to ALAM and Gateway for putting on such a fantastic event. Uh, that I will note is free of charge for, uh, the clients of Gateway, but also of municipalities in, in Allegheny County, which is very rare. These training might often demand soliciting for five hundred plus dollars a person. So this is really a great opportunity for the staff to, to learn and meet our credentials for the permit, uh, without additional costs. Uh, and then I also wanted to mention, uh, Mr. Harris, uh, we've extended an op, an employment opportunity to, uh, Michael Wega. And he will be joining the team starting on Monday, October seventh, as our newest laborer. He's coming to us from Upper St. Clair Township Public Works. He's been there for about six years. Uh, Mr. Harris and the gentleman down at Public Works are very, uh, excited to have him join the team. Uh, he's obviously familiar with many of the, the jobs and skills that they already performed, having been at St. Clair for quite some time. Um, so we're very excited to have him join Whitehall. Uh, and then last but not least, in your packets or on your desk, you should have the budget memo for the twenty twenty-five budget meetings. Um, if anyone is interested in attending, those will be in this room, uh, the first three Saturdays in November. So that's the second, the ninth, and the sixteenth, uh, starting at nine AM. And that's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Ms. Wurz? We'll move on to our Assistant Manager Report, Ms. Wurz.
Yes, I just wanted to highlight that we received the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar that the borough collaborated on with the school district on. So they are in the lobbies. So please grab one on your way out.
Nice.
Yeah. Two.
They have all the Baldwin information there in the high school and Whitehall meetings and such. So it's pretty nice, pretty colorful.
Yeah, there's all the school events as well that are in there. So if you have grandkids or neighbors and you're kind of interested in what's going on in the district, there's lots of district information that, you know, it's open to the public as well.
there's lots of district information that, you know, it's open to the public as well, so there's a lot.
Yes.
On every page.
Okay, thank you. Our Committee reports, Recreation, Mr. Silverowski.
Ms. Wertz, we have a bunch of good stuff.
Thank you. Fall Fest was this past weekend, despite the rainy weather, it was a huge success. Our soup cook-off was the first time we've ever had that. It will be an annual tradition in the Fall Festival. Congrats to Mrs. Thomas, is she one second placed? The Recreation Department has been working with Denise Ignasi, which is our children's librarian, on a winter, a Whitehall winter sustainability market. We are currently collecting donations until November ninth, or eighth. Donations, our locations are the library, as well as the administrative building during office hours, and then the police department twenty-four seven. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. A list of suitable donations is located on the Borough website with a very nice thing. It's the zero waste at zero cost. Winter market will allow guests to shop for gifts for their family members at no cost. This event is great for children, people who would love the chance to give new life and new love to community treasures. The market will take place on November thirtieth in the community room from ten to twelve. The Recreation Department is also partnering with Ms. Denise in a Halloween Spooktacular. We are currently sold out at over a hundred guests. The Spooktacular will take place October twenty-fourth, or I apologize, the twenty-fifth, and it's in the entirety of the library from six to eight. We only have a few spots left for our charcuterie class, one week from today, on October ninth, from, at six thirty in the community room. Fifty dollars per person, that includes the charcuterie board, the meat, cheeses, and accompaniments. Registration can be done through the website. And lastly, our Halloween decorating contest, which is the first that we've done this year. All registration is done by October fourth, which is Friday. And residents, every resident would be able to participate in judging that will happen on October eighteenth. So if anybody would like to put their house in the registration, please do that on the Borough website.
Any questions?
Well, thank you, Stone, you always have the best report. Okay, we'll move on now to the Public Works, Ms. Iker.
I want to make a quick note that a, any hiring decisions or otherwise of HR is handled by our Borough Manager and not by the council, despite the union contract. I have another thing to, to report on today. Two citizens who happen to not be political candidates had reported to me that they believe Public Works has been removing and disposing their, their yard signs. I have also noted that we do have the signboards that rest in front of a lot of our polling places, if not all of our polling places, and those are to, to be delivered by Public Works. I continue to wish that our staff would stay out of the politics and the political expression that there is definite, some legal backing to allowing the public signs to persist as long as they are not within the right of way. And that's been Pendott's position, as I understand. And it has been Allegheny County's position. And they actually do have an ordinance about this, as does the Commonwealth, as does many other municipalities, such as West Smithville and Borough, concerning keeping the signs up until ten days after the election, as long as they are not within the right of way. So, Mr. Solicitor, I'm going to, to hand you the list of these codes, so that you can continue to consider them.
I will definitely look into it, I'll have Mr. Furman look at it as well. There is case law from the federal courts, though, that do heavily regulate this idea of ordinances covering signs. So it's not just a question of state law and ordinance, we've got to make sure we live in federal laws.
Yes, yes, and I understand that Whitehall Borough has no ordinance concerning these signs. And I, I just want to be fair to all political candidates, especially those who are independent, have no party affiliation, or for whatever reason, that they're, do not have their political parties backing, that really staff should stay out of it, and therefore the, the Boroughs should stay out of it, too.
We'll definitely study these and get back to council.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. That's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Move on to Public Safety, Mr. Veth again.
Well, since I'm the mayor, I'm not doing this report. I'll pass it on to Tristan.
Okay.
Yes, the Public Safety Committee met last Wednesday, September twenty-fifth. Attending that meeting were the Chief of, the Whitehall Fire Company Chief, Mr. Chief Nick Price, the Whitehall Fire Company President, Ken Ziggward, and other members of the Whitehall Fire Company, Mr. Skip Brown, Mr. Bill Marcus, and Mr. Mike Chikati, as well as other interested members of the public. The meeting was very open and positive conversation between the Public Safety Committee and the Whitehall Fire Company. And the main message was that both groups want to explore more of the options of collaboration with our neighbors, and what that would mean and look like. So to that end, the Borough needs to move forward based on facts and findings that a fire study of Whitehall Borough and the neighboring boroughs Baldwin and Brentwood would provide. This would give us hard data for which to make decisions. If it shows itself not to be a beneficial collaboration, Whitehall Borough and Whitehall Fire Company both come out of this with a fire study for which to grow from. To be clear, a fire study would be an in-depth analysis by an independent outside group to assess the resources that we have. It would look at the makeup of Whitehall Borough, what it is, and the needs our fire company should address to ensure that our residents continue to receive adequate and cost-effective fire services. It will also look at the strengths we have, as well as the weaknesses, all in an effort to grow. What the committee determined and recommends to the rest of council is that we, as council, direct Ms. Wertz to reach out to the other Borough Managers to gauge interest and support for a joint fire study, and for Ms. Wertz to place this into the fiscal twenty-five budget. It's early, so we don't know an exact cost, but estimates are around thirty to forty thousand dollars for such a fire study. Ideally, that would be divided up between the three boroughs, but we don't know that just yet. But I'm asking council, consensus from council to, for Ms. Wertz to go forward with investigating and reaching out to the other boroughs.
Okay, I think that's something we should look forward on.
Have a conversation, absolutely.
It's a win-win, too.
How much is it per borough?
Well, it'd be thirty to forty thousand.
That's a rough estimate number, they owe.
Approximately, like you said, you won't know.
I forget where it came from.
Yeah, Mr. Skip Brown, if you have anything to add as well, since you're attending.
Sure, sure, well, we estimate Upper St. Clair Township, maybe encompasses the same area that Baldwin, Whitehall, Brentwood, you know, surrounding communities do. They paid forty thousand dollars for it, and it's really based on population. As far as the fire company, I'll quote that we support this. They will come out with numbers and facts to back, you know, what we need and how we can serve, you know, can serve you better. We realize there's limited tax resources, or equipment's getting more expensive, and there's also manpower issues, not everybody's knocking down the door to join, join the fire company. So we've got to plan for the future, and we back this study as it'll present facts, and we can move forward with it. If the other boroughs do not want to cooperate, we strongly feel there should be one done within Whitehall Borough itself for.
Very good. Just, Council, consensus, Courtney, Libby, Forward.
Yes. No, we're just asking for consensus at this point, so I can do some, stop finding it and reaching out more.
Sounds good?
Yes, agreed.
And that's all I have for Public Safety.
You did a good job there, Mr. Furman.
Okay, we'll move on to Administrative Services, Mrs. DePugh.
I have actually no report, except that we are having a meeting, and I believe it's Wednesday, the ninth of July.
No, I think it's eighth. At five o'clock is what I have on my calendar, yes, to our eight, five PM, in this room. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And then zoning, back to Ms. Luchetti.
Yes, nothing to update, the Planning Commission meets next Wednesday, October ninth, at seven thirty PM in this room. And the zoning hearing board will meet on Tuesday, October fifteenth. And at the meeting, the board is expected to render a decision on five three zero one Grove Road, Suite six thirty-nine. The applicant requests a variance to allow an enclosed freezer cooler addition at Gianna Via Restaurant to encroach into a required yard on a corner lot. That is all I have to update.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Library, Ms. Thomas.
Yes, so next month, we'll have a full report after the library board meeting, but I would like to say ahead of time that Love Your Library Month was September, so we have now said goodbye to that. We'll have some exciting numbers, I'm sure, to share with everybody at the next meeting. I think everything went really well, but I don't have the numbers. Also, want to thank the library and everybody that worked so hard between the board and the staff and the friends of the library for such a successful event on the twentieth in the library. It was really fun, it was the Night of Magic, Lee Trozese, who's from right here in Baldwin. It was a really fun night, everybody enjoyed, and I still can't figure out how he did it, that's okay, that's kind of the point. But I do have two, two motions to present to the board today. We have in, at the end of twenty twenty-four, two of our library board members that are rotating off, unfortunately. We're very sad to see them go, but we are very excited to welcome two new members to the board. So I have two motions, the first is to appoint Tracy Brentner to the library board for the term beginning on January of twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that motion. Okay, motion's made in second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. We also have a motion to appoint Damon Neal to the library board for the term, also beginning on January twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that motion. Okay, motion made in second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, I have nothing else.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next is our parks.
Yes, Mrs. DePugh. No, the, the steps at Prospect Park are also in very poor condition, in fact, I think they've been closed.
Yes, they have.
And it will be a tough decision, on budget time, we have two sets of steps. We're looking probably at six hundred thousand repair each one, we don't know yet. So which one we're gonna be, if we're gonna have to make a decision, that's gonna be really a, I'm gonna walk out of the room and let someone put a coin, because that's gonna be a real tough decision. But before we can make that, we need to get authorized Gateway to prepare the bids for the, for the Prospect Park steps, so that we have an accurate figure to work with.
Okay.
So I would like to make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Versus made in second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Anything on business, Mrs. DePugh?
No, that's.
All right, thank you. Okay, now our delegate reports. And that's me, for Allegheny County Boroughs Association and Allegheny leading municipalities. I'm one of the Board Directors, and they have quarterly meetings. And this is the entity that I work with Whitehall Borough and PSAB. We talked about this for years, three years, going on four, unfortunately. The ordinances we have are proposed up, the legislation, I mean. And one's the radar bill, that's as close as it's ever been, but it's still sitting there because our legislature just went back into session September twenty-third. So nothing's leaving yet, again. And also, with the proposal we have for Pendott to be responsible for the repairs of the infrastructure through, of state roads that go through our borough, they should be paying for them, they're trying to bill us for it, so we're trying to get that resolved. So they're still sitting up there. And also, I want to say that our quarterly meeting was held here in Whitehall Borough, and, because each municipality tries to get to have the meeting here to show off their borough, and we took a tour around the pool for a while, they loved it, but it was too late, they couldn't go swimming, so. That being said, in the PSAB, I'll do my report, Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs, and I already mentioned about the legislative session. In April of twenty twenty-five is our deadline to submit any idea, and this will come from our residents. Citizens have an idea, we present it to council, we present it to the County Boroughs Association, and take it up to PSAB. It gets professionally written up, and we can, you have an idea that you think we need to have legislative on, we can, we can get that done, we can, we can be part of that. So, you have till April to think about that, okay? All right, next we have our Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Veth.
I'll take this one.
Courtney, because you're, you're on the board now, aren't you?
I am, and I was just elected vice president as well.
Oh, yeah?
No, we actually, yes. Thank you, but there are a lot of exciting things happening at the chamber. We had another very successful golf outing last month, the weather was beautiful. So hopefully next month I'll have some figures to report on that. Tomorrow is our luncheon, and Chief Degora Care will be speaking alongside Brentwood Chief of Police as well at the luncheon. Hannah and I will be in attendance and supporting him. And then on Tuesday, October fifteenth, Whitehall will actually be hosting a coffee talk here in council chambers to show off the room, and just to meet and greet with other chamber members. So we're very excited and looking forward to that. But, yeah, that is what we have for now.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we're going on to our Merza Board of Directors, Mr. Luchetti.
Yes, Merza met last week, on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth. Nothing major discussed, the Executive Director plans to have budget numbers and a request to each municipality in the coming weeks. Updated service information is that Whitehall received two hundred fifty-one calls for the month of August twenty twenty-four, which is just a small decrease from the previous month. And the average response time was the same as the previous month, at seven minutes thirty-nine seconds, which is below their goal of eight minutes. Lastly, and noted on the agenda, Mr. Robert McCown's term is done at the end of this year. So to prepare for a smooth transition, I feel it's in the best interest of Whitehall and Merza to determine his replacement. And to that, I would like to nominate Ms. Lacy Thomas to be the second representative of Whitehall on the Merza Board effective January first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Ken Ziggward from the Fire Department.
What is two, is it?
Ken from the Fire Department.
Okay, I could do it, Ken.
Ken Ziggward.
Okay. All right, so we have.
Reason being, I think it would be smart to have somebody that is knowledgeable about first responder training and things like that, they could put a, you know.
Well, after about the years on council, that our council members, who are gonna plan to be here for a while, and this is part, it's an intricate part of what our duties are here in Whitehall Borough and council. And Tristan stepped into that spot, as you know, when Phil Gore left, so.
Yeah, to that end, there's, Merza is primarily made up of members of council on the board. So I think that's a, I think that's a benefit, having someone on council on that.
I think it's knowledgeable, having somebody that's knowledgeable about the subject on the board as well. I don't know, I think it would be nice discussion. And four out of seven of us are new, so I don't.
Okay, what I'll do is just gonna ask each council member to say who your choice is.
Before you move procedurally, there is a motion and a second on the floor, so I don't know if that should be a conversation.
You could, you could act on that motion at this time.
Okay.
Or withdraw, if you have it on the floor.
Well, let's act on this motion, do we have a first and a second?
Yes, so it's going to be Mrs. Lacy Thomas.
Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote then?
By a count, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Book?
Yes.
Mrs. DePugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Iker?
No.
Mr. Luchetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas? Do I vote for my girl?
You're permitted to vote for yourself if the job doesn't carry any compensation. It does not.
Yes, I accept the nomination and feel I can be valued. Mr. Silverowski?
I would have liked to actually talk about this, but, um, no, and I don't know why you guys keep doing stuff like this, like all the committee reports, all the committee meetings used to be at seven, seven o'clock, and now. Now the ones that I'm on are at five o'clock.
Yeah.
So I was never on.
One, one at a time, please.
I've, I've been on council for three years, I think I know whenever the committee meeting.
It was always five o'clock stone for the parks, but regardless, this is a procedure that we use here, so.
Just not to cut you off, but procedurally, Mr. Veth just has to pass the vote.
Yes.
That's a definite yes.
The motion does carry.
Oh, Mr. Veth, I, I just wanted to ask you, was this discussed in your Public Safety Committee?
Yeah, it seems like there was a quorum without, you know.
No, we didn't discuss it.
Yeah, there, there, Mr. Solicitor, that, that's another concern, that it, it seems like, absolutely no offense to, to you, Lacy, because I, I do think that you, you would make an excellent candidate for it. It's just the, the order of operations was.
It's a violation of the sunshine.
Excuse me, when, you know, you're saying men discussed.
Oh, there was no discussion. How did everybody here know that Lacy was gonna be nominated and voted yes on Lacy?
Does he just make?
Well, first of all, I mean, you're, you're making that.
The sunshine act, you have to, you have to discuss.
You know what?
Oh, okay, well, then why do you keep violating?
Well, I don't want you, I'm not violating anything, listen. Who, tell me who had a meeting in violation, who had a meeting discussing this? Who?
Well, it seems like everybody was on the same page, right?
Okay, can I ask, can I ask a question? I, I get your nomination, I don't, I'm not saying I'm better than that person or not. I get your nomination totally, I get the reason for your nomination, but why does it, why does it have to be that there had to be a meeting prior to discuss this? What is so abnormal or out of the, out of the realm of possibility that someone could nominate me for something and just say, yeah, that's actually a good decision? Like, why, why did there have to be a supposed discussion?
We were all elected by the public, so yes, there should be a discussion between all of us that we're representatives of the public, you don't just decide and violate the sunshine.
We just decided in public. Okay, so this is, this vote.
Then why didn't it say on the, on the agenda to appoint Robic, Rob, Mr. Robert McCown's successor to the Merza Board term? Why didn't it say right next to it, Lacy Thomas?
So, and then she was nominated at the meeting, at the public meeting.
There was no deliberation?
Yeah, so there was a public safety meeting?
It was never discussed.
You know what, we're just gonna.
Oh, it was never discussed at the public safety meeting.
Well, you don't trust anything, but, uh, there was never.
Okay, well, that's, so that's a final, okay, you know what, we're gonna move on with the discussion, we're done with that. Okay, well, that's, so that's a final, okay, you know what, we're gonna move on with the discussion, we're done with that. Courtney, so we're done with that.
The motion carries, yes.
The motion carries, thank you. Our next reporter is Shade Cog, Mr. Beeth.
Uh, let's see. We had a meeting at Upper St. Clair. Chief, you might be able to explain, it's a search program, we did get a bear cat, am I right to?
Yes, it showed up at our police chief advisory meeting today.
And it's gonna be held at Bethel Park, but it's gonna be owned by Shade Cog obviously.
Technically it's owned by Bethel Park because Shade Cog is not allowed to own a vehicle asset.
And that's why we have the back door.
Yes. Shade Cog generally gets the money or the resources and then the community volunteers to support it and put it on their insurance.
Okay, great. Okay, also rock salt, Courtney, I'm sure you've already submitted if we need, what's our song look like for the community this year?
We are overflowing.
So we don't need any salt?
No, we do not, we met our minimums to ensure that we didn't have to pay any storage fees. And then for the upcoming year, Mr. Harris and I had a discussion and we actually reduced our allocation again. I don't wanna say I hope for a bad winter, but we need to use the salt. So we are well prepared.
That's good news.
If you're at Public Works, don't walk in front of that open door with a sandpaper. It's high.
Okay, and lastly, the Shade Cog meeting will be at Neville Wood, Thursday of October, which is the seventeenth. Right?
Seventeenth, oh, sorry.
That's all I got.
Alright, thank you. Now we have new business to adopt the Whitehall Borough Volunteer Initiative Program. So did you wanna speak about that, Lacy?
Yeah, absolutely, so at the last meeting, we presented packets to council in regards to our new volunteer initiative, fostering a pairing and capability of getting people that want to volunteer in the community with people that need some assistance with some outdoor chores and such. I asked council to take that home and read it, let me know if you have any questions. Anybody have any questions?
I like the idea very much, Lacy.
I do, I do have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
In a, I have a handy, there was something in there about children being allowed to work, and I was just.
Scratch off, but.
Yeah, there was something in there about children being allowed to, to be under the age of eighteen minors. Should we establish any sort of adult to kid ratio? Because I don't know how you envision that to be like a sports team with one coach with thirty kids coming to do some work, or?
I think that's a fair, fair question, and I think that really is gonna depend on the organization, so in my head, I kind of saw two things immediately. One, kind of like you think of scout troops, boys and girls that wanna come and do things and they've got their parents or some leaders with them, right? So that ratio might be a little bit higher. Older and sport youth teams and things like that, that ratio might be a little bit less just baseline of kind of what I envision people might be signing up, police friends sign up. But from a legal standpoint, I'm going through mine.
Lacy, do you wanna explain a little bit to the folks that haven't been here before about your program?
Sure, absolutely.
That we're talking about.
So we're gonna, we're hoping today to approve this new program so that citizens that would like to volunteer to help their neighbors here in Whitehall can sign up, sign a waiver, we'll do a background check, they'll be put on a list, okay? Then we're gonna have folks that contact us and say, hey, I need help, I need help with raking my leaves, I need help cutting my grass. Or maybe in the spring, I need some weeding done in my front yard or something. All outdoor activities, and so we'll put them on a list. When somebody calls in and says, hey, I need, I need some help, we'll be able to pair them hopefully with somebody that's also on the list that says, yeah, I can provide some help. The borough does nothing more than provide that ability to connect our neighbors, right? So we all have neighbors around us that need help and sometimes they ask and sometimes they don't. And sometimes we have neighbors that we don't know need help. So, just a way of getting folks together to help each other.
So Lacy, it's basically limited to these four, solar removal, light landscaping, grass cutting, manly cleanup, right?
Correct.
Everything exterior.
Everything exterior, absolutely.
They sign a waiver, how's that handled, Mr. Solicitor?
I believe the waiver was included in your packet last week.
Yeah, no, but how does that handle if there's a problem?
So there is a process then that, if there, so I guess first, if there's an issue between the volunteer and the recipient, that is a private matter, the waiver does indemnify the borough, that's not to say that you wouldn't be named in a lawsuit, we're always named in everything, but we do have legal protections, those, both those waivers have been reviewed by the borough solicitor and our insurance company as well, that this won't have any impact on our rates. So we are, we are covered there, and then, sorry, what was the second part of that?
That was the only one. I like it, I like it a lot.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Solicitor, I'm sure you're aware of Act fifty-three regarding the interaction of minors and there usually goes in hand in hand with that a FBI fingerprinting that it is done with making sure that you have the appropriate identification and it's something that I've done multiple times in the past and done recently. And I do know that it's not very costly, but there, there are some costs to, as it entails to, I, I would say it would be a ballpark about sixty-five dollars, who, who would be paying that?
Well, my understanding is that we know municipal employees involved with anybody working on the projects or supervising them, so.
We are simply facilitating the connection and matching individuals and that's where the waiver, the waiver acknowledges as such.
I, I was under the impression that there would be some sort of background check for the, the volunteers, so what would that entail?
If there's, the, the waiver, there is no background check, the waiver covers all of that information and again indemnifies the borough as listed, I think the section is actually called whole harmless and release.
But I thought the volunteers are actually the minors, the question is.
Not always, no.
Yeah, more an adult supervising them or an adult providing.
Correct, I think there's some confusion, so Mr. Lucetti was, was talking about the provision that we acknowledge that there's probably a lot of minors who need service hours or that are gonna wanna help, and in those instances, there, there needs to be an adult. And, and that, I think, was your question as far as is there a ratio, you know, is there a familial relationship? Are you bringing just your kids, your kids' friends, that is one type of minor volunteer. There's also a provision for those that are volunteering through a school or through a boy scout troop, some type of already organized activity that presumably goes through those background checks and, and that has those ratios in place. So it's already an established, recognized legitimate group that then is just participating in our program. So I wanna be clear that, that there are two separate things that I think are being discussed here.
You're not asking the citizens who request their help to get a clearance?
No.
Just those organizations that might involve minors, those folks probably.
Already have their, yes, we're only allowing.
They're a scout master or potentially a little youth group.
Yes, yeah, anybody that's a teacher, like an established. Already has those credentials. Legendary group, not just you and a scout. Right.
I have another couple of questions, is there, do we need to have any sort of list of what would constitute removing a recipient from being on this list? With some sort of, you know, if there's actions that they take, do we need to have something written out?
The solicitor and I discussed that in depth and it's, it's subjective and where do you, do you end it? That being said, that in the waiver and part of the review, people can be removed from the program for any reason, you know, at the borough's discretion. That being said, those individuals have a right to appeal, you know, would have an appeal process to plead their case. But there's no, you know, list that says if you do this, is it a misdemeanor, is it a felony, you know, I don't know all the bad things that people would do to your DUI in college, prohibit you, like, we're, we don't wanna get into that, again, we are facilitating the connection and kind of taking a step back from that for legal protection.
That's all I have.
I like to volunteer my yard.
Okay.
I was starting programs.
So, Ms. Wertz, how do we? There is a motion on the agenda if we would like to take action.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll put forth the motion to adopt the Whitehall Borough Volunteer Initiative Program.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion's being second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Lacy.
I'm very excited. Very excited, thank you too.
A lot of people out there in Whitehall will be very happy, you know?
Yeah.
Several driveway or, you know, whatever the case may be.
I encourage everybody in the audience to sign up, whatever side of the coin you wanna be on.
And then we'll just go on our website.
Give us a few weeks to get it running, but we will publicize it. Yes, I'd like to thank Ms. Wertz and Mr. Galla and Mr. Furman. And Mr. McTirren as well for your assistance and getting this to make sure that we have a really nice solid program to really hopefully make a good difference for our community, so thank you all.
And I just wanna, under new business, do the military banner program that we have on for about ten years. Two thousand fourteen, we started this in Whitehall. And for a couple of years, the volunteer, Angie Venetti, God bless her, she passed away. But, and then our Lions Club, Whitehall Community Lions Club, and in particular Elaine Frombok did a superb job for us. It's a full-time, you know, non-paying job, but she loves her veterans like the Lions do, but, you know, it was time to step away from it. So as you probably know, in our bulletin this past October, asked the community to volunteer, anyone who was interested. We do have a volunteer, so she's all set, rearing to go, but I'm not gonna submit any of her information yet. Let her get acclimated and get the information together and then in a couple of months, I'll put out the, her contact information. In the meantime, if anybody, you know, will have this out there too, that they can contact me, which, and I'm always in the shadows there with this program, so I'm happy to be there to assist, but right now, you can just contact me if there's any questions. The program goes through, well, the banners are up until right after Veterans Day and they go back up just before Memorial Day. And that being said, we're always taking applications throughout the year, so that never ends. So I just wanna let everybody know in case anybody was wondering about that since it was in there. We got a pretty quick response, we're proud of that, so thanks.
That, that's wonderful news, I, I would ask that said volunteer get introduced with the public works folks who are involved in that, thank you very much.
Okay, super good, okay. Lovely, any other new business?
Yes, I have one other bit of new business. Last week, Mr. Erica Royo from the Baldwin Whitehall Education Foundation reached out to Ms. Thomas, Ms. Wertz, Chief Degorek and myself with an idea inspired by an email from a concerned parent in the school district. The parent reached out to him about unsafe drivers, specifically around school buses and how it seems particularly, particularly worse this year. And the parent's suggestion was something that the city schools and Pittsburgh are doing, putting up yard signs that say stop, slow down, stop when the bus arms out, I don't know the exact wording.
This is stopping stop, I have a picture, small, but this is the photo they sent.
So that inspired Mr. Royo to reach out and he's requesting yards, the borough, both Whitehall Borough, Baldwin Borough and Baldwin Township to donate funds towards purchasing signs to have that same basic message. And his intent is to actually have a, to talk to the high school art teacher, to have a student or students design a sign and then details haven't been worked out how to choose the sign, but that would be the idea that a, a stop for school bus sign can be painted to go around the area. So he's asking council for no more than three hundred dollars to put up two hundred signs around the area and those signs would be focused, first identified by the transportation department and bus stops and then secondary locations would be identified by the police departments in the boroughs and then third, it would be an open to all residents who wish to place them in their yard. So I'm just asking council to formally support this and I make, I would like to make a motion for the next meeting agenda to provide payment towards this once we know a firmer number.
Well, there, is there any consideration about how long these signs will be up? Who's responsible for them when they bend, get ripped? Who can take them down, the homeowner, right? Because they do get, weather, other destroys, weather destroys some of these signs, or would you please ask them?
Yeah, that is a, that is a good question of when do they get taken down, how do they get taken down?
And target for this program, if all the boroughs are coming to an agreement, we get the signs would be for the start of the school season in January. So not rushing to do it right now, but you know, after everybody's on that, that long break around the holidays and it's back to school and those buses are out again, kind of putting it out then when we hope it can make a lot of impact to remind folks to slow down and stop.
So yeah, a motion to add to the next week's agenda to discuss payment of the signs to the.
I have language.
Yeah, okay, if you have another one, I'll answer.
Some of your judgment, I think your motion is to add a motion to the agenda at the next council meeting to support the Baldwin Whitehall Educational Foundation Sign Initiative in the amount of three hundred dollars.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's a wonderful idea, thank you very much. I, I've been somewhat concerned about the, the speed limit around our, our schools, whether they be a public school or a private school, because we, we do have quite a few many schools in our municipalities, so I, I do believe that the only school that has any restrictions of speed limits just because it's in the vicinity of a school is Harrison. Where we, we have a good many schools and it, it's something that I, I might tell my fellow parents who, who live in other municipalities, that this is the way that, that Whitehall does things with, with a disbelief that this is not state law.
Yes, Iker.
Yes, yes, chief.
There's a school zone at Harrison, there's a school zone by Whitehall Elementary, there's one by Baldwin High School. One at Baldwin High School actually ends up being on Doyle Road, because that's, because the kids walking to get to the high school. We actually are gonna start looking at all the schools to see if it's time to start updating signage as far as the school zones go, see if the school zones have to be widened or if they have to be changed, because there are changes in demographics and movements of people. That's something that we are gonna start considering looking at that next year. As far as reducing speed in the, in the neighborhoods, some communities around us have decided to arbitrarily make their neighborhoods fifteen miles per hour. That's not permissible under state law, that's not enforceable. Twenty-five is the general speed limit in a residential area unless there's specific reasons. A school zone is one of those specific reasons. But we have, we have been, we've been taking a look at all of our streets, trying to identify what signage needs to be replaced, what signage is kind of outdated. We've got through about a third of the borough and we're, we're gonna continue more of this next year. And as far as the school bus campaign goes, this is, I, I like it. To be honest with you, I have community relations in the police budget, I can probably give the three hundred dollars to do this. We reached out to the school transportation department, he got back to me, he, he can give me all the bus stops, but he's having a harder time parsing them out into the number for the actual communities, because we were gonna try and divide the signs between the communities based off the number of bus stops. Something else that had come out of that meeting, we're gonna talk to the school transportation director, we'll talk to the bus drivers to maybe try and tell us what the problem areas are and those are the areas that we can kind of focus for the signs to go initially, because I agree with you, when we talk about this, we don't want the signs to pollute the whole park. We don't think they're gonna be everywhere, we're not buying two thousand signs. You know, it's, it's a small number, first come, first served, we're gonna try and deploy them in the, what would be considered the problem areas. You know, in, in Whitehall, especially in September, when school is new and the buses are back on the road, for those of you that are out walking in the morning, we follow school buses constantly, looking for violations. That's why sometimes you don't see us in, in the morning, sitting on some of the streets with more volume, because we're actually out in the neighborhood chasing the school buses. So I mean, this, this is a great thing, I think that is something we're gonna, we will be able to support, no problem and we will definitely have the money, because I, I can give it out of the police department community relation.
And I have reached out to the managers of Baldwin Township and Baldwin Borough, their meetings are not until next week, but they were initially receptive and supportive, obviously they will take it to their elected officials because the conversation was, this really only works district-wide, we're only one part of the Baldwin Whitehall School District. And while we support it, we'd like everyone to.
Sure.
And you know, back to our school zones, the other challenge with the school district was the temporary redistricting because of all the construction. It moved the population, it shifted, it shifted the times that kids were coming and going.
It changed the times again, they changed the times again in the last couple of days.
Yeah, so we, we've kind of, we've, we've talked about that, we're kind of holding off on actually adjusting signs until they actually settle out what the final class schedule's gonna be and once the kids are all back to their permanent locations, because I because I believe it's only sixth and seventh grade that are back at Harrison right now because of construction, eighth is still up at the high school. So this is, this is gonna be a little bit of a, a process.
Well, we have a motion, do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Tristan.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Okay, no new business, ask for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion's made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.